If everyone will take a seat, we're going to get started with our meeting. Number seven, 2023, at six o'clock PM. I'd like to call the special meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. And I'd like to welcome everyone in our council chambers, as well as everyone who is watching or listening on the city YouTube channel. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Mayor Ali. Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Gordon Young.
Present.
Councilmember Grayeb. Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
And Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Regenbach. Councilmember Velpula.
Present.
And Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
We have a quorum present, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Please, everyone, join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Again, this is a special city council meeting to discuss the 2024-2025 biennial budget. Madam Clerk? We are at public hearings. Twenty-three dash three fifty-seven is truth in taxation hearing regarding the 2023 property tax levy to be held at City Hall for Nineteen Fulton Street, Room 400. Thank you. I'd like to ask for a motion to open the public hearing. Moved by Councilmember Kelly, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Just want to read a background before I invite anyone who wants to speak relative to the tax levy. Background: A truth in taxation hearing is required under the Truth in Taxation Act if the amount of taxes to be levied are five percent or higher than the previous tax levy. The 2023 tax year, 2024 budget year levy is proposed at $29,94599, or a seven percent increase over the 2022 tax year or 2023 budget year. The purpose of this increase is to fund the city's police and fire pension obligations. The anticipated tax rate is anticipated to stay flat, meaning the same, and this increase is to capture additional property value in the city. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in this hearing relative to the truth in taxation? Again, is there anyone present who would like to speak relative to the truth in taxation, property tax levy? For the third and final time, is there anyone present who would like to speak in regard to the truth in taxation hearing regarding the 2023 property tax levy? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Moved by Councilmember Velpula, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk? Twenty-three dash three forty-three is a communication from the city manager and finance director, Comptroller, with a request to hold a discussion on the 2024-2025 biennial budget. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have some report backs before we get into the motions that we'd like to just kind of quickly walk through. At this point, maybe I'll turn it over for the first three report back, or four report backs, to our Public Works Director to walk through those quickly, and then I'll turn it over to the finance director and fire chief as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council, sorry. Mr. Manager, excuse me. Make sure you could hear me. It's been a while since I've sat here. So first, we had the question that came from Councilor Seer at the last meeting regarding our PCI reports, and we had received the report actually that day, on the 31st, as you'll note within the report. And that, again, is the raw data that we normally take, formulate, give to engineers, and then they pour over that data relative to actual road conditions. And that's around this time of year, which is accompanied by the winter, meaning we're going into the winter. So in the spring, we then take that same data, drive the roads, and see what the winter effect has been upon the data that we received in the fall. And that's for obvious reasons, because, again, we could have a PCI rating low, and then as a result of a bad winter, freeze-thaw cycles, rain, snow, precipitation, basically, meaning it could change the PCI and move a particular road up on a list on priority. So that's the logic behind where we are. That process usually takes a month or so. We would usually formulate the report, what we're going to do relative to recommended capital projects and pavement preservation in late spring. Would, well, I'm sorry, not late spring, March timeframe, is what we'd normally report to you, what the pavement preservation plan would be, and our initial thoughts on capital projects. So I'll stand by for any other questions you may have on the PCI before I move on.
I don't see any. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Powers, when will we get a chance to review the PCI report?
I would propose that that would be after, again, in the spring, Counselor, after we have driven the roads, the spring.
Did you say the spring?
The spring, that is correct. Again, the point being is what we have now is data absent the effect of what this winter will bring.
Well, my, my problem, Director Powers, you know, I, this is budget time right now, and when I get all these calls, I mean, I have thirty-four Registered Homeowners Association in the Fifth District. I get calls all the time how bad the streets are, and I, and there's only so much money we have available, so when I talk to them, especially the Homeowner Association President, I'm trying to, like you are, I'm sure, trying to prioritize, I guess, where the, where we can first spend the money that we have available this year. So for me, not to have this report available before we vote on the budget, the next, I'm assuming, the next two or three, I mean, we got December deadline, so the next few meetings will be finalizing the budget. What do you want me to tell my constituent, Director Powers, as far as how we're going to prioritize all the bad roads in those thirty-five subdivisions in the Fifth District?
The same way that we have since I have been here, based on the PCI logic and the review from engineer. That's what we have done. I will say, for the future, we are currently underway with a study to broaden our asset management system. I've said since I've been here, and I'll say this again, because it's the truth, and that's what I'm ever going to tell you, is a PCI, our pavement condition index, is one, one piece of data, one. There are many, many factors relative to what should go into making a decision on what and where our money and dollars should go toward what we do to improve infrastructure. And that's the overall, that means operations touching a piece of infrastructure, that means a winter, that means a natural disaster, that could mean any number of things that really truly have a full effect on decision-making. Today, the city of Peoria does not have that comprehensive system. We are now looking for one. We have a project manager onboard, in fact, working interdepartmentally to figure out who has factors involved in that, that range from what we do in engineering, what we do in operations, what we do with finance relative to capital budget, all of which I think paints more of a picture rather than data for you that I would like to bring before you in the future. Unfortunately, today, I do not have that. I'm trying to get there with our department. What we have today is this data and engineering input, and the input that we can provide you post-winter.
So I guess I'm just going to have to tell my constituent that right now, I'm assuming that the PCI report, the order that we have right now, we're using the PCI report that we received three years ago, would that be accurate statement?
I would say it would be a promulgation of all three reports plus this one. There have actually been three previous reports.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Powers. How long did it take for the contractor to survey all the streets, not, not prepare the reports or whatever, just to do the street surveys?
Likely sixty days or in that approximation, usually a couple of months.
Okay. And you'd like to see what winter does to the streets?
I think it's absolutely a necessity to see what winter does, because it will, if we have an average winter, an average Midwest winter, it will affect the PCI.
Which says to me, please correct me, that says to me that the PCI that we just got and just paid for, et cetera, we're going to amend because of winter without the equipment necessary to do a new PCI. We're just going to, I mean, I don't, I don't quite get it that couldn't bring all these factors into the PCI in a more timely fashion at this point, realizing that this PCI is going to last three years, and it's, and it's, of course, not going to be perfect, but it's, you know, the best we can do, whereas we throw another winter into it, and then how do we adjust those readings without the contractor?
So two points, Counselor, to put me in response. One, I concur, and I spoke to that, absent holistic asset management system that gives you real-time data and effect on roads to include imagery. Again, the effect of operations touching something, the things we do not have today that are frankly siloed to a degree that I'm trying to get to for the city of Peoria, that's one. However, we aren't going to drive every road. What we will do is take the data that indicates what we should replace from a data perspective, the lowest PCIs. We will drive those and determine if they are worse, or if one that was maybe just under as a related to winter may be moved up. So the entire list won't be done, the, the list that basically pushes out, say, the top ten per district. And I'm saying that arbitrarily, because that would be a good point to make. Say, we would take, okay, and within the five districts, we had these ten roads that showed should be reconstructed. We will drive those, prioritize those based on the effect of what we see in the data, and then the effect of winter, and adjust accordingly, and make recommendations, do what we have available with finance, bottom line, and then submit them to you for review, which is what we have done, as far as I know, since I've been here and before that. I don't know how long we've been under contract to use the PCI, it's a very common point, but is also a very common point to make that I just did, that more and more cities, state governments are realizing that PCI is a data point, not the data point. It is a snapshot of surface pavement and the condition of that pavement at that point in time. And absent the effects of other areas, it doesn't give you an absolute, you need people to get involved.
I, I think I understand that, Mr. Director. In your mind, that your new management system will eliminate the need for a contract PCI outfit?
No. I believe what it would do is integrate the PCI, our engineering data, its condition, along with operations, meaning eighty percent of the department out touching, filling potholes, doing some patches. Again, none of that is addressed until you actually go look. That's what you pick up in the spring. Those things that happened, that Director Maroon's staff has gone and addressed that may improve the condition of a road and may drop it, based on what they've done operationally. Or, again, the winter may have affected it adversely, and it moves it up the list. The new asset management system will integrate all of that, so we see it on a dashboard, depending on our prospective areas. For instance, in the Directorate, Director Craddy, myself, are very interested in how capital dollars move from project to project based on the desires of council. So all of that will be visible for us to bring before you in a snapshot.
So under the newer system, if we had the new system today, when would we see the report?
Probably around this time, as we were building a budget. That is the goal, so that you can see those, because we would see the effects of last winter. And we would have had this year to go through this, and we would be doing the design, the letting, and those things that we normally see this time of year. That's what we hope to see with a holistic asset management system.
Thank you, Mr. Director, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. I don't see any more questions. Director Powers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The second report back was on OSF Glen Oak from Berkeley to Pennsylvania, which has been added. There should be a budget sheet in your package noted for next year with a $670,000 project taking place out of the East Village Tiff. We should accomplish that in 2024. So if you, I have further breakdown on cost if you need that, but again, you have that in your package, and it has been added before you. So there was conversation, I believe, with OSF and what we were doing there, and there was general concurrence that this is a good project, so this is the estimate that we have. You can refer to the CIP sheet. I'll stand by for any questions you have.
I don't see any questions.
All right, the third report back was on sidewalk funding for Morton Square to the riverfront, or also commonly referred to as the Evans Street multi-use path, and the quote that we put together, or the estimate, if you will, for that project, taking it in two phases. Phase one would be next year at a cost of $500,000, which we would propose taking from the park to Jefferson, where we have least, the path of least resistance, again, no pun intended, but that we, the obstacles would be Adams-Jefferson, and then subsequently the railroad to get us to Constitution Park. So that being said, that is the proposal you see before you, and again, you do have a CIP sheet that breaks out twenty-four, twenty-five project costs, would be $500,000 in twenty-four to get us to Jefferson from the park, and then the $800,000 the following year for us to cross Jefferson-Adams and ultimately the railroad. And I will stand by for questions there as well. And this would be an eight-foot multi-use path, I'm sorry, on the south side of Evans, I believe.
Please proceed, Director Powers.
Finally, report back number four is for the Moffett Cemetery improvements, which we were able to find $150,000, oh, excuse me, yes, $150,000 for, through the Eagle View Tiff. You also have that in front of you in a CIP or in your package, which will provide for some parking. Basically, it's going to be some infrastructure improvements to the Freedom Memorial, Freedom Memorial, Freedom Memorial site, excuse me, so that people can come in, there'll be a curb cut, so you can have some access, there'll be an ADA parking spot and so on, so that, and that work will all take place in 2024. And again, I'll stand by for any questions on that as well. Believe that's all I had, unless there are questions.
Thank you, Director Powers.
Thank you, Mayor.
Then we'll move on to report back number six, which is the response from Chief Solberger pertaining to the staffing for the fire department. Turn it over to the chief.
Madam Mayor, City Council, Mr. Manager, thank you for having me tonight. The report back reflects the history of our rescue squads and how we got to where we are internally with the fire department, incident totals that were requested by Councilman Regenbach, the breakdown in the surrounding territories in the effective response in those areas, Rescue One's call volume, as it stands right now, is a jump crew at Station Eleven with Engine Eleven. Also, relative talking points would be the vehicle extrications and the structure fires that they have gone on. I think one of the things that is important as we get into this discussion is this fire department responds in two different areas. Eighty-four percent of our car volume is medical-related, and we respond appropriately in that area, and our response model is solid. We can't, there's not one part of this town that we can't get to in the appropriate amount of time in regards to medical-related calls. Now, on sixteen percent of our calls that are fire-related, this is where we struggle. If we believe in national standards and we follow NFPA to the best of our ability, in trying to get sixteen firefighters on the scene within that eight-minute response time, you can see the data that we ran relative to that from 2020 to year-to-date, and that is the area where we struggle. And so as we went through this workshop on what a positive impact a rescue squad could be, whether that's manned with personnel or overtime, what that potentially does is, or not potentially, what it actually does is, is it keeps an engine company in that territory during that fire emergency, and then the rescue squad would respond and perform that function. And I'll answer any questions if there's any.
Questions for the chief? Councilman, Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, just to reiterate, this proposal shows that manning this increase would be done through overtime, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that you are the authority as far as usage?
Yes, sir. I am the fire chief.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Manager, relative to the cost, can you speak to the cost factor? There was some information about hazmat being included in the cost, and maybe it was also duplicated.
Well, we, we have had $400,000 of hazmat revenues just about every year for many years, so you really can't count that as revenue towards this service, because it's already been in the budget. You can't count it twice. So it's money that we've already booked, we show it as revenue every year, goes back for a number of years, so you really can't claim that as new revenue. It's existing revenue that has offset the cost of the fire department's budget, so that's the reason why that was excluded from that, from this report back. The, the next report back does talk about the financial implications of all of the budget motions, and Finance Director Craddy can walk through those projections for the council as well.
Okay. Thank you. Chief, I want to make sure that I'm clear on your explanation relative to fire incidents and non-fire incidents. As it relates to a delay of the rescue squad implementation, is it your opinion that when it comes to non-fire events, that there, there could be a delay, or you would recommend or be able to live with a delay, but when it comes to fire events, that you would not recommend a delay? Can you clarify for me?
Yes, so I apologize if I was confusing at all. So eighty-four percent of our call volume is EMS-related, and there is no delay. We have twelve fully-stashed fire stations, they're equally divided throughout the town, and our response model for EMS, whether that's basic life support or advanced life support. All fire stations are manned with paramedics on a daily basis, and there is no delay. So where we have this, and I don't know if delay would be an accurate word to describe, is, is if we're trying to get to a working fire in an appropriate amount of time with sixteen firefighters to be able to mitigate that scene, that is where we struggle, if that makes sense. Hopefully, that answered that.
Okay. And when I was speaking to delay, I'm, I'm talking about delaying implementation of a rescue squad. Is it your opinion that delaying implementation of a rescue squad, you could live with that for non-fire events, but it would be difficult to accept relative to fire events?
That would be accurate.
Maybe I'm not saying that, is that accurate?
That would be accurate. And, and our response model as it stands right now, I mean, if we have two significant events in our town, I mean, we have one resource left in our town, and that's just a reality. We've lived in this space since 2018, when we lost our rescue squads due to budget cuts. When we lost Engine Two, and I, and I hope that I'm not boring anybody with the history of this, is that we were drowning as a fire department. Chief Bachman, under his guidance, working with the city manager, we recognized that we had this gaping hole in regards to our fire response. We applied for a safer grant, and we got that, and we hired eleven firefighters. And as I've spoke to you, all of you individually, this is where we're at. We need to clearly define what our expectations are as a city in regards to fire response. We've lived in this space for five years, and we have to decide as a city what is our level of tolerance in regards to fire response. Our EMS response is solid. If we want to continue to live in this space, we've been living here for five years. And so it's, I, I challenge everyone, it's not just my responsibility, it's all of ours' responsibility to clearly define what are our expectations of our fire department.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Gordon Young?
Chief, I have been fortunate enough to have a little more insight regarding what the fire department does, having served as a dispatcher for eighteen years. I don't know if, and with that, I don't know if the average person really knows, like, what does it mean to set up a box, or what happens on a 211? And I come from the space when there was Rescue One and Rescue Two. And I was actually very surprised to find out that these changes had taken place, being that they were so utilized in the past anyway. So can you explain, you know, because the average person won't understand all this jargon, like, what happens, like, who responds? jargon, like, what happens, like, who responds to a 211 fire? And what happens when there's two incidents occurring in that same district?
Yeah, so when we look at our response models, and these are based off of facts, based off of national standards through NFPA, and every fire department in the country tries to the best of their ability to attain those numbers, and we're not going to be shocked that the city of Peoria would not be the only municipalities that struggles with this. If we have a working fire, so as that 911 call comes into dispatch, and the dispatcher receives it, and it's confirmed that it's a working fire, we try to get 16 firefighters on the scene. All fire stations or all fire apparatuses manned with three personnel, so you can do the math, that requires five companies to respond with one battalion chief as the incident commander. We only have 15 resources in the city. So if we call a 211, that requires additional resources, and that's generally speaking, that's a medium to high hazard, that's a high-rise, a commercial structure, things that have grown past the capacity of 16 firefighters to mitigate that scene. And it happens quite often. We try to establish attack lines, backup lines, rescue, we have rapid intervention. All of these things, they all require a team and a crew, and they're dedicated to those tasks. When anybody looks at a fire scene, and obviously with your intimate knowledge as a dispatcher, you know it's organized chaos, and we try to mitigate those things in a certain amount of time. And that's not just for the safety of the community, that's for the safety of the firefighters as well. Because as that incident continues to grow, it now continues to put the firefighters at risk. And hopefully that answered that. But as that incident potentially grows, or it grows outside of the capacity of that initial alarm, we have to call for more resources. So if we have two significant events, and generally speaking, it takes six to seven companies to mitigate a working fire, once again, you can do the math, now we're down to one company in the city. Now, I will caution you with this, because it's not fear-mongering, that is a rare event. To have two working incidents in the city of Peoria, that's not a common event, that is rare. But it does happen.
Thank you. I just think that it's important for people to understand that it's limited resources. And if there's two things going on, and that could very likely happen, you know, and then you throw in some other incident where you're required to be there, you're really stretched then. And then do you reach outside the city?
We do have mutual aid agreements, we're part of Mabus 36, and if we got into those instances, and we've actually used Mabus 36 before. We had a fire down at the foot of Reservoir, leading towards Route 8, and we, they call it striking a box, and we hit the Mabus 36 box because we didn't have water supply, and we could use the surrounding volunteer departments to help us.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Graham?
Chief, one of the things that I think we're deficient in doing as a council, explaining to our constituents some of the information that's rather arcane, but it's firsthand knowledge to you and firefighters and some of the council members who have gotten up to speed on this. What does that Rescue One, we have one now, and it's sparsely staffed, must be rob Peter to pay Paul to get two on there, what does it actually do? Tell the people of Peoria what Rescue One does, what they respond to.
And not to be short with you at all, the name describes itself. So its first number-one primary responsibility is rescue, and a lot of people get confused by that. We have assigned tasks when we're on the fire scene, does that mean that an engine company or a truck company couldn't rescue? That's not true, they can, but they also have immediate tasks to be able to mitigate that scene. So this rescue squad, they are assigned to rescue, but they're also there for the protection of the firefighters. And oftentimes, that gets lost in the shuffle. So our first primary responsibility is protecting the community, but we're also there to protect ourselves because we attempt to the best of our ability to operate safely.
So for example, if there's a car accident, the rescue squad may be an integral part of what extrication?
Yes, sir, I appreciate you bringing that up. So when we went through this exercise in 2018, when we lost the rescue squads, all of our truck companies were assigned, at that time, we had two, because we took the equipment from Rescue One and Rescue Two, and we put them on two strategically-located trucks. These trucks are not designed to carry that equipment, but we may do. As it stands right now, we do have four sets of extrication equipment in the city of Peoria, all three trucks, and then now the rescue squad, which is a jump crew, does have extrication tools. So for the layman, when people hear jaws of life, cutters, spreaders, that's what a rescue squad would do on those type of calls.
So this is almost mid-November, and to date, that jump crew has responded to 650 incidents.
Correct, and that's just the rescue squad. So, you know, when you add those totals from Engine 11, because it's three people, two apparatus, but specific to Rescue One, that is accurate.
I was absolutely startled to see that number, and I've been on the council since 95, I had no idea it was at this level. Then, in reference to structure fires, it looks like Rescue One has called out, up to date, to this point in time, the year of our Lord, 2023, 144 times, so that figure may yet...
It's gone up since that report.
And when you take a look at Peoria, which is an old, old city, with a lot of older housing stock, historic settlement of the city, we've had a lot of very, very bad fires. Just this year alone, I watch these reports that come across every morning of every day, same thing that I look at Chief Escheverias. And the idea that somehow we're lavishly funding our fire department is precisely the opposite. We're robbing Peter to pay Paul. You know, I had to debate a little bit tonight whether we should just do a half-measure here, by one more firefighter to make dedicated capacity of two for that one rescue engine. Talked to at least one of my colleagues, and she thinks that we really need to look carefully at restoring both of them. There was a reason why we had both of those at one time, we didn't just decide we wanted And now it's just like pulling teeth. To make the case, it is very, very dangerous to continue with the staffing, as is. But I learned a lot by looking at these stats, and I appreciate the report you've given back to the council. And as somebody who's been here a long time, I was amazed at the large number. So I think some of our newer members, I think they'll find this information edifying as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For Alan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for the information. Just a clarifying question, so I know that the proposal right now will be staffing this with two individuals via overtime. Can you speak to the assignments of those two individuals? Will it be the same two individuals every time? Are they going to rotate different personnel in order to avoid, you know, burnout and things of that nature? Can you kind of speak to how you all do your personnel assignments?
So we went through this same type of situation when we put Engine Two back in service with overtime. It's important for us to establish a regular crew. So we have bouncers currently, and we have two captains, two engineers, and a handful of firefighters that fill in for people during vacancies. So it'd be my recommendation, working with Local 50, if this is considered for implementation, that we would assign and bid a captain and an engineer to that spot, and then we'd backfill their vacancies with overtime. Because then you would have the consistency of the work in regards to Station 11 responding with Rescue One.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me. Chief, thank you for all your reports here, and I really appreciate you taking my calls so many times. I want to congratulate you first. Received some calls today from some of the firemen, actually, that were very complimentary to know your activities and your leadership so far, and a lot of these guys really liked you. So I think it's very important, with my background, to know that you have a leader, a coach, or manager that you really like, so you can perform much better. So congratulation on your leadership skills, and you're doing a great job for all of us. I want to clarify a couple of things that was said at last meeting. Number one, anybody around this horseshoe or the manager ever ask you to come up with ideas to generate revenues in your functions?
No. I took that upon myself, because I thought that it was important, as we go through this, whatever it is that you're leading, whether that's in the public entity or in the private sector, I think it's important to prove how. So as I've gone through this, we try to deal with why, you know, why are we potentially trying to implement this? And then how are we going to be able to fund this? So that was a workshop that I did on my own.
So I'm calculating around $350,000 year-to-date, is that about right?
Yes, that was my calculation.
All these programs, so thank you very much for your leadership. But I want to make clear that nobody around this horseshoe put any pressure on you or any of our firemen to come up with some income, right, to take care of these expenses. So that's important, that I think our constituents know that. There's absolutely zero pressure on any of our department to generate this type of income. Number two, unfortunately, you know, we don't, you told me, you know, it's not something that nobody likes to talk about, but we have a loss of life a few weeks ago. Anything that this manager, you, our fireman, this, everybody around the horse, anything we could have done to save that life, which was only four doors away from fire station?
That's difficult to answer, to be honest with you, but considering the proximity, considering the time of day, how the series of events unfolded, I don't know if there's really anything that anybody could have done with that particular incident any differently.
So I just heard you a few minutes ago talk about respond time, and we're struggling. I think that's the word you use, struggling for fire. I know you've been working, and some, your past, our past fire chief and yourself, working very hard to try to cut down on respond time. Tell us, if you can, I'm not sure how much you want to make this your effort public, but one thing we talked about, you and I, all the time, is about the location of our firehouses. For the future of Peoria, are we still working on that? Is that, would that be a great step? Would it be a priority, should that be a priority for this horseshoe, to really look at the location of our firehouse, make sure that we have the finest equipment and the best location possible? Would that help alleviate some of those struggles you're talking about tonight?
Absolutely, and I've talked to some of the councilors and the city manager about this specifically. I think that we should always be challenging ourselves, where is our call volume, where is our risk, and do we have our resources in the proper location? So I think that that's an exercise that we should be doing often and fluid. And I know Mr. Manager and I have talked about a couple of fire stations in their current locations, and some of the things that we need to do to address that.
Mr. Manager, or Madam Mayor, is that a time where I could request a report back, or is that later in the meeting? Can I request a report back from the chief? So Chief, one question, last question, and then I might ask for a report back. Are there areas in the city of Peoria where there is more fires than others?
Yes.
Which area would that be?
We, now, I mean, it has moved, there really is no line of demarcation, it's generally in our older neighborhoods, East Bluff, South Side, now more centrally located in town. So that's our fire stations, Station 3, 4, 8, Station 10, those are our areas that we see the most fire.
Okay. Is Josh Martin here tonight? I don't see him, is he here? Okay, good evening, Josh. I was invited to a meeting, a Local 50 meeting, a couple, a few weeks ago, a couple months ago. I was, I was, I don't know if surprised is the right word, but I didn't like the fact that some of our firemen, biggest problem seems to be some challenges with stress and PTSD. Now, I'm not a doctor, but if our heroes have problem with PTSD and stress, I'm not sure, again, I'm not a doctor, but I'm not sure I want to put them in a situation where they have to perform overtime. Okay, I think most of the firemen I talked to, they want to work their shift and go home to their family after they're done. So I'm not sure this proposal with overtime, we all understand about the pension and the problem of the pension, unfunded pension, but I'd like to see a report back from you, if I can. The areas where we have the most fires, I'd like to bring back, have four men per truck instead of three. Is that possible for you to come back with that?
I want to make sure that I have some clarity, you want to, I'm sorry, Mr. Manager, if I, report back on the fire incidents?
Not on the fire incidents, on manning the trucks. Right now...
Where the truck locations are?
Where, I want, where we're the most busiest for the fires, okay? The areas, if we had four men in each truck instead of three, how much would that cost us? Does that make sense?
Yes, sir, we have three trucks that are in service, Truck One, Truck Four, and Truck 14, so it would be three positions instead of two.
These are the trucks that are busiest with fire?
Busiest with fire would be Truck One...
How much would that cost the city, our budget, if we had four men per truck there instead of overtime?
Get a report back, working with city manager and Director Craddy?
To staff a position, it takes 3.6 firefighters to staff one position 24/7/365. So if you're talking three additional positions on trucks, three trucks adding one person, you're talking three times 3.6, so, you know, you're talking 12, 13 positions to hire.
That's exactly what I'm talking about, and I'd like to know that, please.
Okay.
Understood.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Valpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, my questions will be targeted to clarify around the operations of Rescue One. In your report back, you said that overlapping calls are an issue. So my question is, how specifically will Rescue One reduce overlapping calls as opposed to redeploying the existing units?
So overlapping calls happen, they're very unpredictable. We ran the workshop year-to-date in regards to specific territories that touched Station 11, so Station 3, Station 10, Station 13, and Station 16, and what the overlap of EMS calls. So for people that don't understand what the overlap, let's say Engine Three is currently on an EMS call, and another call comes in, now you would have to send Engine Two or Engine One from Central House to cover that call. And my proposition would be, in territories that, you know, surround Station 11, that Rescue One could be considered for EMS backup.
Another follow-up question is, did you consider the, you know, solutions such as peak demand units or alternate deployment units for this purpose?
Well, and I think that that's what's difficult, if that was the only thing that we did, that's something that we could consider, but considering that we go on fires as well, we have two different response models, we live in two different spaces. So if we only went on EMS calls, I think a model like that could be considered, but considering that we go on fires as well, I think that that response model would be flawed.
Okay, and then the final question I have is, this rescue squad is proposed to improve responses, right, quick responses. But by how much? I mean, what are the specific response time targets, and how do you plan to achieve these targets?
So as we've gone through this workshop in regards to effective response force, and that's the way it's labeled through NFPA, trying to get 16 firefighters on the scene within eight minutes, the only way that we could get 16 firefighters on the scene in an appropriate amount of time, we exceed 12 minutes. And that's based off of response times, that's based off of fire station locations, and that's just based off of the data that we currently have.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Gordon Young?
Chief, I just have an additional question that I thought about. I was going to ask about fire station locations, but I was also wondering, is Station 12 closed?
It is not. Station 12 is on northeast Adams, just north of Kamatu.
All right, so if, so all of the firehouses are open?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. If you, do you have full capacity in terms of fire personnel?
Once we have this graduating class, next Friday, November 17th, we will finally be at full staffing at 171.
Okay. So 171 firefighters is what you would need to be in full capacity for a city of this size?
Yeah, for, that's based off of the authority that's granted us, so 171 firefighters.
Okay.
That's suppression firefighters. We do have limited 40-hour firefighters, but most of our staffing is suppression, which is the firefighters that are in the fire stations.
And of those 171 who will be a part, that will put you at full capacity, will that help eliminate some of the overtime in terms of burnout and things of that nature?
Yes. We have six firefighters down at the training academy right now.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Well, thank you, Chief, for your comprehensive report back. I don't think we have any additional questions right now. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The last report back is just, we wanted to provide you with some financial projections of the budget motions, just so that was there for council to consider. I will turn it over to our finance director to walk through those.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Manager, thank you, Madam Mayor. What I added to the packet was four different financial projections for the general fund. I want to remind council that within the budget as presented prior to these motions, the city was in a position with this budget to be above the general fund policy of 25% of our expenses through 2030. So when we go, when I go through these four, I just kind of wanted to talk through what the impacts of all these proposals would be. The first page, which would be page 56 in your packet, looks at if all the council motions are adopted. Just as a reminder as well, the motion for Glen Oak and the motion for the Moffett Cemetery do not actually hit the general fund, those are paid out of the two TIFs. Both of those TIFs do have a strong enough fund balance to absorb those expenses. The, if all of these motions were adopted, if you look at 2030, the city would be in a position of having a 3% fund balance or a little bit over, right around $4 million in cash reserves at the end of 2030. What I also want to keep in mind with this is this is the budget as presented and no cuts, no additional revenues other than just organic growth. So those things can change, obviously with council directives in future years, but that is what that, all the motions would look like. Turning it over to the next page on page 57, this looks at the impact if the council was to simply do the building permit fee cut. That building permit fee cut is around $1.3 million. So that would put the city in a position of having 14% fund balance in 2030, once again below policy. The next item, which is on page 58, would look at the fire rescue additions, so this would be the $1.2 million and obviously growing based off of inflation annually. We'd be looking at having a 10% fund balance in 2030, so once again below policy. And then the last motion is just the sidewalk improvements. So the sidewalk improvement project while being paid out of capital, the general fund would need to make a transfer to the capital fund to pay for that because the budget as presented only has $180,000 in that general, in the capital fund. The capital fund is really intended to be a pay-as-you-go type of fund, so normally you don't have a fund balance sitting in your capital fund, so we would need to make that general fund transfer. So within that project, we'd be looking at a 22% fund balance in 2030, slightly below policy. And I'm available if council has any specific questions on, on those projections.
Very helpful, thank you. Any questions for Director Craddy or the manager? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just one question, Director Craddy, what is the total unfunded pension number?
Right now, we're sitting right around $400 million.
Thank you very much, sir, thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Director Craddy. To our listening audience, can you just, just give a simple explanation of why is having 25% of our fund balance important and that we adhere to that policy? Why does a municipality need to have that much cash on reserve?
So absolutely, the Government Finance Officers Association has a recommendation of 25%. In essence, that equals to three months of reserves, is kind of the rule of thumb. The point is, you know, if you had a stoppage in revenues, whether it be property taxes or just state revenues, which the state of Illinois has had a habit in the past of delaying payments up to at times six months in things like state sales tax. So keeping those reserves in place would mean that the city services could continue to operate if our cash flows altered in a way that would put us into a bind.
And then what would be the alternative if we did not have the cash on hand, what would be the city's options?
The unfortunate option at that point would be looking at working cash bonds or looking at some kind of line of credit in those term, during those times, which are going to come at a very, very high interest rate.
Or you cut services or raise taxes? Those are your options. I mean, when you, if you're drawing down your reserves to that level where you get, you're gonna, council's going to have to make those policy decisions, do you cut services or do you raise taxes?
Thank you, Director Craddy, thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Some of our newest councilmen did not go through this situation, but our firemen's know, know, our chief and, and our local 50 president, they know about tough times in the past. We had to cut people, when you're sitting in this chair and a few years ago, we had to cut jobs because we didn't have any cash, it's important. Right now, we live in good times, we're in good times right now, we have to protect our cash. Most of you guys know that, some of you guys might not know, but it's so difficult to tell your police officers, your firemen, you gotta go home because we have no cash, okay? We gotta protect our cash right now, we're in good time, make sure that we prepare for the bad times that are coming, they are coming in the future, we will have bad times, okay? Let's make some good decision today so that we can save our cash as much as we can, so we don't have to lay off anybody down the road. It's, I'm telling you, when you sit in that chair, I have gone through this one, I never want to go through this again, okay? Let's save our cash, very important, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Craddy, I didn't go all the way down to the bottom of these things when I was preparing for the meeting, so I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not quite up to speed. In the year 2030, what is our projection right now of our general fund?
So it varies, obviously, between each of the different models. If you look at the budget as presented with no motions, it would have our fund balance right hovering around 25-ish percent.
Okay, and that projection is... What are the major factors that changed that?
So the major factors that can obviously affect that is revenue growth or lack of revenue growth. But looking at kind of how, how the modeling is set out, is we do look at some pullback in revenue in 2025, in 2024, assuming some kind of recession, but then moderate, moderate revenue increases all the way through 2030, which could be accurate, it could not be accurate depending on what business cycle we fall into. Then if you look down at the expense side, that tries to articulate, obviously, the best of our abilities, what our contractual obligations are in our union contracts for our increases on our staffing pieces, it looks at our growth in pension obligations, and it also looks at our debt costs out through those times to try to give that good picture of, of what those costs will be.
Okay, okay. This year's prospective budget, without these add-ons or subtract-ons, we have 190, 192 million dollars of revenue, is that right?
No, we have overall revenue-wise, it's more around two, around two...
I'm, I'm sorry, two, I'm sorry.
Yeah, around, around 290.
Yeah, 290. And our expenditures are 311.
Correct.
Okay, so we got a $30 million differential. Where did that money come from?
Where, where did the lot, where did the negative amounts come from?
Where did the 30 million come from?
So it's primarily in spending, spend down of capital projects, specifically in our capital fund, but also stormwater.
Where did we get the money? Not, not, what did we spend it on?
So we got it out of our reserves.
Right. So this year, with more money than we've ever seen, we are pulling $30 million out of our reserves, okay? And you're complaining that some of these items here are going to really cut our reserves. I'm late to the game on complaining, I will admit, and I am embarrassed about that. We pulled $30 million out, and we know that four or five years out, six years out, we're in trouble, and by 2030, we're in deep doo-doo. I just want to... I don't want to spend any more money, it would be, it would be nice to have a balanced budget, especially with this increase in revenue that we've seen. And we're all put in a difficult position here on some of our other priorities. And we're told, gosh, we have to be prudent. And we just yanked 30 million bucks out of our general fund. Now, I know every dollar, every dollar is, has a, has a good reason for it, you know? We could responsibly spend 400 million, we could probably responsibly spend 500 million dollars, but we don't have the money. But we only had 290, 290 million, and we, and we grabbed another 30. You know, I think the... And what happens when we do that is that if there are other priorities that any of the people in the council have, it's just absolutely irresponsible for us to vote for it. Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, just too important, I gotta jump in there for a couple of questions. Mr. Manager, can you explain to all of us again about the pension fee that we had a few years ago when we were short on cash? Can you explain how much it was, for how many years, and what was it for?
Yeah, we had established a, a public safety pension fee that was on each individual parcel. It was set and established for a three-year period of time, I believe that it did have a sunset. We had recommended continuing that because that was money that was going directly towards our pension obligations. Council did make the decision to sunset that fee, so we no longer have that, it's not built into any of these revenues, it wasn't anticipated as part of this budget.
And we had to do that to balance the budget, correct?
We, we put the public safety pension fee in place. Over the years, we had seen that, that we had property taxes in the general fund that were being used to fund operations, and as, as our pension obligations grew, we reduced the property taxes in the, in the general fund and increased it in our police and fire pensions. Now we're at the point where we, with our property taxes, 85% of the city direct levy goes to, to public safety pensions, the rest goes to roads. And, and, you know, there's, the library is kind of separate with the library's debt service and the library's operations, but for the city's portion of that that's direct, that's where that ends up going. So the, the fee was established to minimize the amount of money that would come out of the general fund and have to be transferred to our public safety pensions. Since that's been eliminated, we've caught for the last couple of years, the increase in personal property replacement taxes helped to mitigate the amount of, of general fund transfer that we have, but long-term, we're going to be spending more out of the general fund, is going to have to be transferred out, and the general fund is where we pay for most of our staffing. To clarify one point that Councilman Kelly made, he mentioned that there's 290 million in the general fund, it's not 290 million dollars in the general fund. You know, you, at one point, you, you said that we were spending 30 million dollars out of the general fund, and that's not correct, 20 million of that is coming out of the stormwater utility fund, which is, can only be used for drainage purposes, and that's part of, of the money that's being drawn down. So I just wanted to clarify that portion of what you said.
So thank you very much for your answer. Director Craddy, I don't see you over there, but I know you're there. To Mr. Manager's point there, I was going to ask for clarification because that was my understanding. So it's really revenues are 292 million dollars, expenses are 322 million dollars, so that's 30 million dollar gap. My understanding, Director Craddy, is 18 million of that comes from our stormwater utility fees, that counts, is that correct?
That is correct, and the other about 11 to 12 million is out of the capital fund. The general fund as presented actually had a slight $500,000 surplus this year, so the spending within the general fund was within balance.
Thank you very much for your clarification, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Graham?
I have been here for 10 different recessions to be predicted out of three. Oh, and I'm sure we know quite precisely into 2030 that we're only going to have a $4 million cash reserve. I'm just quite certain, we can know that with absolute certainty, and I'm certain, certain people in this room are prescient and know what grants might be available between now and then. This is obviously an attempt to paint a very dark picture so that we don't approve something that's going to save lives in our city. This has happened over and over and over again, precedent for it. When I arrived here, we bought a thermal imaging camera with the help of a citizen whose, I think son was a firefighter, and everybody was complaining, oh my gosh, they cost so much, this technology. Well, they funded it, but it's, it was funded with great difficulty, I would say it was almost with bake sales. And immediately, the firefighters who were out in the field told us, it saved lives. We didn't have thermal imaging cameras at that time. So through time, we had to fight like the devil to get thermal imaging cameras, chief, on all of our trucks. It was going to cost too much, we couldn't afford it. And so now we have all these dire predictions. Now, I'll tell you what, I looked at the agenda coming up, our next regularly scheduled council meeting. There's a lot of stuff on there for public safety, and there should be. There should be. But it seems like, and I think there are very, very powerful forces in this community, and I'm going to talk about it in more detail with the passages of weeks and months. Forces that we are subsidizing as taxpayers, we're doing their job, their job with our tax dollars. And we, as a council, are afraid of the power of this entity. We're afraid of them. We're afraid of them. I'm not afraid of them. As a matter of fact, I sat on that side when we thought we had six votes to run the ambulance company. Yeah, did you hear what I said? The ambulance company. We missed it by one vote. And now we're subsidizing this, the pure, men and women of the Puria Fire Department, the men and women are our taxpayers here in this town, are subsidizing a not-for-profit. Not-for-profit. Do you believe that? If you believe that, I have some swamp land for you to buy in Florida. When are we going to address that? We have time between now and 2030. And by the way, the fire department's already begun with their pluck and their entrepreneurialism to raise money. But we're going to be asked to approve a lot of public safety stuff next time. It seems that the one part of our city that we give the hardest time to because of these powerful forces and the way they control some of us around here, the hardest department to fund, and it should be one of the simplest, just like police, is the fire department. This has been going on for years. It's like their public enemy number one. And Mayor, you'll remember a while back, I'm not singling you out, I just, out of courtesy, and I know you were upset about it, just as I was, we put our employees on the ballot with something that they were to vote on in a plebiscite. If I had worded that ballot question, it would have passed. But we put our employees on the ballot to say, oh, pensions, and do you support this and that? Basically, do you support your taxes increased? Now, who in the world is going to say they want their taxes increased? I could have reworded that question and we would have had it pass just like we did in 2007 with the library system. 72% of the people thought that was a core basic service when we expanded and revamped our wonderful library system by a 72% vote. We're not getting any help from our manager or management on this. None. If anything, we have Malthusian projections that all these numbers snatched out of the air, which I've never seen. I've been around here a long time. Oh, we're only going to have $4 million cash reserve in 2030. Doubt it. Don't believe it. Don't believe it. And then we talk about stress for the firefighters. Really? You're going to talk about stress? I would say they're pretty stressed right now. And not everybody is going to be asked to fill in that extra position. Every time we turn around, it's going to be rotated around. If the addition of one firefighter to halfway responsibly staff that rescue one. If that brings down London Bridge, I'll eat your hat. That is so much sophistry. That is sophistry. One additional person. And by the way, the fire department is helping to generate money through the creativity of Local 50. They have skin in the game. So all of a sudden, guys, you're going to destroy the budget and the fiscal integrity of the city if we do this. These arguments are so bogus. They're so wrong. They're so inaccurate. They're so irresponsible. I can't believe I'm hearing it. Thank you. And by the way, I, I am willing to make a motion at the appropriate time.
With no more discussion, I think we can take a look at our motions. We do have motions that have been prepared by the manager based upon the input from several council members, and you should have this in your packet. It's titled Proposed Motions for Consideration. I'd like to take these motions in the order that they're listed, beginning with Councilman Regenbach.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the first motion I'll make will be to make the infrastructure improvements on Glen Oak Avenue between Berkeley and Pennsylvania, which just as a reminder is the section between OSF and in front of the new Cancer Research Center, or Cancer Center. This is a $250 million investment. And the street is overdue for this, and it'll be a mill and overlay, and we'll be able to be done next year with the money allocated. So I move to amend the proposed City of Peoria 24, 25 biennial budget to increase the East Village Gross Cell TIF budget for the Glen Oak from Berkeley to Pennsylvania road maintenance in the amount of $650,000 in 2024.
That's seconded by Councilmember Euler. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is for the Evan Street sidewalk or multi-use path. And I use both of those words because I'm sure some of you heard from some of our friends in the North Valley that they were a little caught off guard by a multi-use path. Just, just for the record, as the complete straits model would indicate, we would have sidewalk on one side, a multi-use path on the other. Clearly, that wasn't in the budget for this year. But with working with the manager and Director Powers and Director Craddy, we've been able to come up with a plan that would put in an eight-foot multi-use path on the south side of Evan Street, which would connect Morton Square Park to the riverfront. This would include go past the Art Inc. Center, the Romance Center, so it would collaborate with a lot of the existing amenities in the North Valley. But most importantly, I think it would provide safe access to the riverfront for the residents. Right now, you would have to cross at Spring Street or go all the way down to Bryan, which is about a 10-block area that there would be no crossing. We have the split in the two-year project. The first year would be from Morton Square Park to Jefferson. And then we would take it to the riverfront the year after. I would just point out to my colleagues, something that I just noticed since our last meeting is that IDOT has allowed the flashing yellow beacons as crosswalks on Adams Street. And right by Providence Point, there's a series of three of those. So that's the same model that we would be looking at Adams and Jefferson at Evan Street, and as we know, IDOT looks at things differently than, than the municipality oftentimes. But seeing that they've approved this on the same road and other areas gives us a lot of confidence moving forward, I think. So with that being said, I move to amend the proposed City of Peoria 24, 25 biennial budget to increase the capital fund budget for sidewalk funding from Morton Square to riverfront, to the riverfront, in the amount of $500,000 in 2024 and $800,000 in 2025. And I do have one more comment after we get a second.
Okay. Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilmember Valpula. Any discussion? You wanted to say something additional?
Yes, I do want to make sure that the residents around Evan Street know that once the funding is approved in the final budget, we will have a meeting to, to discuss the actual layout and what this will look like. So I don't want anybody to be caught off guard or, or become uneasy about it. There's no additional right-of-way required. It's simply a sidewalk improvement project, which will now be the eight-foot multi-use path, which is a term that we all understand, but sometimes freaks out our residents. So I just want to say, assume that there will be opportunities for input down the road. Thank you.
Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Just to in part echo what Councilmember Regenbach just said, I was one of the people involved in some of those frustrating contentious phone calls over the last few days. A lot of it's from, you know, lack of information or the wrong information that gets out and causes confusion, but just reiterate that we do want to and will continue to work with the residents of the neighborhood. And sometimes we have to plug things into the budget before we can actually come up with a plan, but we have to look at the numbers first and then figure out how to make something work, and that those discussions will happen and continue. And I will also continue to advocate for a renewed plan for the North Valley and looking at that part of the city as a whole, and how do we make connected improvements there. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I try every time to support my colleagues, especially the councilmen of all districts, because I know how important it is, but in this situation here, we have to show some restraint. I have to show some restraint. I have a wish list for the 5th District also. A lot of projects, a lot of bad roads in the 5th District, and I know just there's just not enough money for all these things. So I will be voting no. I'm sorry, Tim, I just can't support this. For, we're just, I just feel we, we have to show some restraint in our budget. Thank you.
You're welcome. With no more discussion, I would ask that you please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one nay. Seer? Our next item, Council, Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, as we all know, this project is, this work, this motion will provide the finishing touches for a project that has provided a lot of historical significance to our community. The Moffett Cemetery recognizes the, and commemorates Nance Leggins Costley and I want to say maybe 56 Civil War veterans, as well as some of whom were involved with Juneteenth celebration. And the improvements will finalize the work that Mr. Hofer and his team have diligently raised money for and completed over the past two years, and it includes permanent signage, paving as well as parking. So I am just happy, especially happy that the money will be coming out of the Eagle View TIF budget. So with that, I would like to make a motion to amend the proposed City of Peoria 2024, 2025 biennial budget to increase the Eagle View TIF budget for the Moffett Cemetery improvements in the amount of $150,000 in 2024.
Seconded by Councilmember Graham. Any discussion? Councilmember Graham?
All right, Mayor, I just wanted to second it.
Okay, great. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. The next item comes from Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
This is what I would call a speculative motion. I would like to, in general, make Peoria more welcoming to investment and therefore employment, et cetera. But and this is, from a monetary perspective, this is a very small item for anybody's budget, but it is a big item, I think, in our, in our image. We're going to do something here that no one else does. And I, hopefully, it sends a signal. And it may not. We, we can undo this at any time. But the, the budget projections, et cetera, assume that this will do nothing for the city. That is a possibility. It can't hurt the city. But it might do nothing. And from there, it might bring us some dividends and rewards. How much? I don't know. We're talking about currently a million two or almost a million three in projected loss of revenue with the approval of this. And hopefully, the amount we lose in coming years explodes. But we'll see. So and you all have the write-up and you know, if you have any questions, why, I'd be happy to answer, but I will make a motion to amend the proposed City of Peoria 2024, 25 biennial budget to decrease the general fund budget for the elimination of building permit fees in the amount for the elimination of building permit fees in 2024 and 2025. The amount I have no idea of.
Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Discussion? Councilmember Graham?
Yes, my visionary friend, Councilman Kelly, and I are very concerned about what we're doing to ward people off, discourage them from coming to our downtown, and that includes the meters. I've been on a crusade to eliminate the meters, which are rarely, we rarely have parking enforcement. At a state representative meet me to conduct some business, and he said, oh, don't worry, Councilman. You don't need to feed the meter. So I doubt we're making too much money off the meters, especially when they're not working half the time or more. There's a way we can police, Councilman Kelly and I have had extensive discussions about this, to make certain somebody doesn't hog a space downtown for several hours. This council could set a limit on it and enforce it with these technological wands that we have, or even a piece of chalk, and say, we could decide no more than 90 minutes before a ticket might be given, or whatever we want to establish with input from our administration. But, but I'm just, I'm just curious. By the way, on this parking thing, and you and I have discussed this, we just thought that we were going to make so much money here in Peoria by charging people to park at the Greater Peoria, Wayne A. Downing, Greater Peoria International Airport. We just thought that was going to be a huge cash cow for us. And guess what? We lost our ridership. Bloomington Normal eclipsed our ridership. Dan DiOrio helped a whole lot on WMBD by talking about free parking and ringing the little bell. Well, the minute we have a great airport authority. Fabulous airport authority. Straight at state-of-the-art airport. We got money coming in to rebuild the, the control tower, I believe, as part of the American Rescue Act. I love flying out of Peoria. But doing it for free, my gosh, I'd almost rather fly out of Peoria than go through that mess at O'Hare. Certainly, I'd rather fly out of here than spend my money down in Bloomington Normal when the airport's five minutes from my house. I just have to be a little incredulous. Councilman Kelly, I don't think you're giving yourself enough credit. I'm a little incredulous on this figure here. $1.284 million to eliminate building permit fees in '24 and '25. That's an amazing figure. We must have a booming economy in Peoria. That's an amazing figure. We must have a booming economy in Peoria, and that's good because we're bringing in more resources than we thought. So I wouldn't be quite so down on yourself thinking, oh, it's speculative. I'm not sure that this is going to work. But I think your goal is to have something that'll make Peoria really stand out. And that's those parking garages that people have to go into. We've had security issues with those as well. But please, Manager, is this bonding amount that we're talking about for all of them, this $1.284 million? I'm sorry, eliminating the building permit fees. Where are you getting that figure?
Well, that's based on our historical revenues that we've collected every year from the amount of economic activity and what we charge businesses for their building permits.
So this would not have anything. What is it going to be for '24?
It's the budget for 2024 is estimated at $1.284 million.
In '25?
In '25, it is $1,309,680.
Okay. But this says that the amount is, what's $1.284 for '24 and $1.284 for '25?
$1,309,000 for 2025. We anticipated some slight growth, as we've seen.
You anticipate growth, but it doesn't say that here. You didn't give us a higher figure for '25.
On the
Maybe I'm looking at the wrong document.
On page five in the budget motions, it shows the dollar amount for both 2024 and 2025.
Well, what I'm looking at here, maybe I need to go because we have conflicting information with the information we've been given. It says eliminating building permit fees in the amount of $1.284, $1,284,000 in '24.
It doesn't show the amount for 2025 on the sheet that we have.
Yes, yes, Councilman. Please help me on this because I'm not getting much clarity on this.
I changed the motion
Yeah.
as I requested it. And I left out the dollar amount because I don't know what the dollar amount will be in '24 or '25. So I changed the motion just to say building permit fees, period. So I would say that the guess that Mr. Craddy and the manager made is probably responsible. But I left out the dollar amount. Thank you.
Well, I know what you're trying to do. And do you feel guilty at all about this motion? Because we're about to be asked to fund public safety. So, you know, I would say that's pretty darn important. But are you going to have problems sleeping if we approve this? Well, that's what Harry Truman said, too, after he made a very important decision in 1945. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer? Councilmember Seer?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, just personal knowledge here. You're looking at $2.6 million. What how much does it cost to run that department? Is that a just to defray the cost of it? Or is that a moneymaker for the city? Where's that $2.6 million go?
If you'll bear with me, I'll give you the total budget for the department. Give me just a second. On page 246 in your budget book is the Community Development Department. The total budget of the Community Development Department, and this includes capital expenses, entitlement spending that we have from, you know, the Community Development Block Grant and the home budget as well, as well as American Rescue Plan funds for 2024 is budgeted at $12,027,290.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'd first start off by applauding my colleague, Councilmember Kelly, for trying to think of outside-of-the-box ideas. However, I spend a considerable amount of time in the Economic Development Department, working with that team and developers that come into our city to talk about trying to do projects here, to the point that Assistant City Manager and I were joking earlier that I almost needed a desk in the Economic Development Department. And I can give you a list of 100 places to spend $1.2 million that I can tell you what that will do for development, and I just can't go along with with cutting $1.2 million in revenue per year for something that's speculative at this time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Vespa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I also, I think, you know, my colleague, Councilman Kelly, is being creative, and I applaud that. And I understand wanting to send a signal that we're favorable to development and business. I'm just not convinced that this would alter behavior such that, you know, we would be able to make up or in other in another respect justify the loss of approximately $1.3 million in this coming fiscal year. I think, you know, airport free parking is a good example of something that does influence behavior. I cannot see developers, however, saying, oh, well, there's no building permit, therefore fee, therefore I'm going to, you know, locate this development in Peoria. I think, you know, I'm open to ideas, you know, free parking is a good idea, too. It's worth discussing, worth considering. But for that reason, I'm going to be voting no. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Gordon Young?
Just a clarifying question for Councilmember Kelly. Is this some first of all, let me make a comment. I also want to commend you on thinking outside of the box. And in my opinion, putting people first, I get it that we're talking about economic development, like, that's critical. But also, from my understanding, this isn't just about big developers. This was about, you know, your small business owner and things of that nature, or people who may not that $50 or $500 may make a difference. When you are proposing this idea, was this a trial period? Or was this a five-year, you know, or just it would be eliminated forever?
Madam Mayor? Oh, got it. Thanks for your question. I would hope it would be forever. I don't know that if this has a positive effect on our image within the community and outside the community, if we can ever measure what that has amounted to. I don't know that we'll ever be able to measure it. So my preference would be to keep it forever. If there turns out to be some way to measure the effect of this, fine. But I so again, if we enacted this and in three years, we decided to reimpose these fees, we would be working in the dark, just like we are tonight, not really knowing if this has made a difference or not. I feel that the more positive our image is in that investment community, the better it is for development. How much, where, when, I do not know. One of the things I do believe in, if I may go on just a little bit more, our job is to create an environment where the people of our city can thrive. The if we manage to be able to create that environment or improve that environment, we have no idea how creative and how productive our people can be. People make the city, not us. We our job is the environment of the city, the economic environment is what I'm talking about now. So this is a very, very small step in the way. I agree with with Councilman Euler. Nobody is going to jump up and down on saving .008 or .009 or .002 of their of their budget of their construction budget. Maybe a few will, maybe right on the margin, they will. What I'm looking for is is our image as a city that's really interested in attracting people, helping people to do what they want to do in the city. I'm sorry, that's a long answer, Councilwoman, but thank you for asking.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly, I agree with you that nobody else does this. I think it's building permit fees are typically a part of doing business as relates to construction projects, and businesses typically build that cost into their project. So the expectation, I think, from businesses that they typically have to pay a building permit fee. And I, you know, I applaud your creativity as well, but the fact that there's no evidence that it's been successful elsewhere, I like evidence-based type projects, and that's the reason that I can't support it. I don't see any more questions. We have a motion and a second, so please cast your ballots. The motion fails with four yays, Gordon Young, Graeb, and Kelly. Our next motion comes from Councilmember Graeb.
Madam Mayor, I move to amend the proposed City of Peoria 24-25 biennial budget to increase the general fund budget for the additional fire staffing, for rescue staffing, number one, the amount of $1.2 million in '24 and '25.
A second seconded by Councilmember Allen. Discussion. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support the motion 100%, but I cannot tonight. Okay, I asked for report back. I mean, I'd like to know how my colleague here asks for discussion all the time. We're having a great discussion tonight. To me, I'd like to know from the chief, what would happen if we hire 11 more firemen to for the most busiest fire station we have? Okay. Last time we checked on that, it was $100,000 per fireman with benefits and all that. So we're looking at a million two. So do we spend a million two or invest a million two in 11 firemen, new firemen? Or do we invest a million two in someone that we talked about burned out tonight, PTSD or whatever, some just overtime? Okay. And of course, all my colleagues will come back to, yeah, but one overtime pension is pensionable, and if you hire 11 new people, do you have a problem with pension? Well, guess what? No, we have a lot of problem with pension already that we'll never see the end of it. Okay, my colleagues talk about bad news. If you think we will ever be able to fund $400 million by 2040, I have some swampland for you, too, in Florida. If you think we can take care of $180 million for a CSO, that's unfunded mandate from the federal, I got some swampland also. If I got I got $40 million unfunded for the stormwater utility, problem we have, right, in the 3rd, 4th, and 5th District. We have so many bills out there. I mean, it's ridiculous. If you understand money or chances of funding all these things are zero, zero chances. Okay. So I want to know. We don't have discussion. Okay, we don't have to take a vote tonight. The budget's not finalized for a few more weeks. I'd like to know the difference between a million two in 11 new firemen or a million two into overtime. So that's why tonight, I'm a no for tonight, but I'd really love to to continue discussion if we can. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Seeing no more discussion, please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one nay. Seer. That completes our motions tonight. Manager, did you have anything else to add related to the budget?
No, we'll prepare all of the appropriate paperwork for the budget to be voted on at the next council meeting. So thank you very much.
Okay, alrighty. Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council, and we have not received any cards.
Okay.
We are at executive session. There is none, so we are at adjournment.
Can I get a motion moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Graeb, to adjourn? Please cast your ballots. We are adjourned. Thank you for your service.